We will now call, we will now call the meeting of the Waco City Council on January 19th, 2021 to order at 3:00 PM. Joining me today are Mayor Pro Tem Hector Sabido, Councilmember Andrea Bearfield, Councilmember Josh Porterood, Councilmember Kelly Palmer, and Councilmember Jim Holmes. City staff also online today are Bradley Ford, our City Manager Jennifer Ritchie, our City Attorney and Esmeralda Hudson, our City Secretary. On March 16th, 2020, the Governor suspended various provisions of the Open Meetings Act pursuant to his State of Disaster Authority. The change was effective March 16th, 2020 until further notice or until the State of Disaster Declaration expires. In accordance with physical distancing guidelines and while providing as much transparency as possible, this meeting will not be open to the public attending in person. This meeting is being broadcast live on WCCC.TV. The audio is also being recorded. The video and the audio recordings will be available to the public. According to the Governor and Attorney General, statutes that may require face-to-face interaction between members of the public and public officials are suspended. However, the governmental body offers alternative methods of communications with their public officials. This includes public comment on agenda items. In an effort to allow for as much public input as possible, those who wished to speak or submit their written comments on a listed agenda item were asked to register with the City Secretary's Office today by 1:00 PM. Individuals who register to speak on an agenda item must limit their comments to three minutes. On items other than public hearings, speakers will be allotted one three-minute presentation regardless of the number of agenda items the speaker wishes to address. We will now recess the regular session and convene to work session with the report from our City Manager Bradley Ford.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Councilmembers. We have one change to the agenda today. I have delayed work session 2021-031, which is an update on cities for Financial Empowerment Fund initiatives. We're going to host that at a later date in 2021 due to the need to discuss several matters in executive session later today. On employee recognition and organizational updates, I believe you'll hear more about this in the Halsey Report in a few moments, but as you know, we had just a really large snowfall a week and a half ago here in Waco. Not only did it break some records, it broke a lot of tree limbs. While so many in Waco were out enjoying the snowfall, we did have several city teams responding to the impact on our roadways. And I just want to thank and highlight those crews who got out and sanded those roadways and cleared fallen trees and debris. And a special thank you particularly to our tree trimming crew in Parks and Recreation who had quite a job to do in Cameron Park. They did a great job of reopening Cameron Park Drive quickly. Appreciate all the staff's work there. With that, I'd like to give Larry Halsey a moment to provide the Halsey Report.
Alrighty, here we go. I'm going to share my screen real quickly and we'll get going. All right, Keep Waco Beautiful hosted its annual Chipping of the Green Christmas Tree Recycling event on Saturday, January the 9th at Paul Tyson Field from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Due to reports from fresh tree sellers like HEB and Home Depot of lower inventories of fewer tree sales due to reduction in family gatherings and big celebrations, 125 trees were ground into mulch and kept from being in the landfill. On Monday, January 11th, Mayor Meek was the guest speaker at the Waco Rotary Club, now meeting virtually. Mayor Meek provided up, provided an update on information to about 70 virtual club attendees on a variety of topics, including the status of various CIP, economic development projects, transportation projects, as well as the latest on the state of the, of the state's COVID-19 vaccination program. As Bradley Ford, our City Manager, mentioned a minute ago, Waco recorded its largest single day of snowfall in, since 1982 on Sunday, January 11th. It gave our citizens an opportunity to see their city covered in white. While many of our citizens took the opportunity to enjoy a typical Waco one day of white by having snowball fights and making snowmen like this nine-foot giant officially measured and created by none other than our City Manager, the weight of our, of the wet snow challenged the strength of some of our evergreen trees throughout the city and especially in Cameron Park. Park crews were busy all day Sunday clearing fallen trees across the city from roadways throughout, all the way through the city and fallen trees as heavy snow covered branches. By Monday afternoon, crews were able to reopen Cameron Park, which had been closed due to safety reasons while the work was performed. And with all the rain and snow we've had lately, Lake Waco is almost full with a level today at noon, it's 461.45 with a normal being 462. Through carefully planned local communication plan, the State Department of Health Services authorized the announcement of Sunday, on, on Sunday, January the 29th, excuse me, Sunday, January the 10th, of the distribution of 1,500 Moderna COVID vaccines to be given starting Tuesday, January the 12th at the Waco Convention Center. Obviously, the communication plan worked, worked since all 1,500 registration slots were taken just one hour after messaging was released. A well-organized team of medical technicians administered the doses over the three days to persons who met the state prescribed, prescribed 1A and 1B categories of eligibility. The latest vaccine information can always be found at covidwaco.com where people are encouraged to sign up for the city's e-newsletter that will send an alert to people about future opportunities for COVID shipments and registration. The city has also provided its public information hotline that provides the latest vaccine information via phone in both English and Spanish to reach those who may not have email or internet access. A $4.4 million project replaced a 40-year-old 2-million-gallon Ritchie Road Elevated Water Tower took a major jump forward with the raising of the tank of the new composite 2-million-gallon tank on Wednesday, January the 13th. The total project will include the demolition of the old tower, once the new tower is complete and operational, which should be around September of this year. On Monday, January the 18th, city officers were closed, allowing employees to celebrate Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day with the rest of the nation. The mayor and all the city council members individually took time on Friday, January the 15th to lay a wreath on behalf of the city at Martin Luther King Jr. Park. This year, the 35th Annual Candle Lighting Visual was conducted virtually at 6:00 PM on January the 18th. It included a special message from Mayor Meek. And the first day to file for a place on the May 1st City of Waco General Election Ballot for Council District 1, 2, and 5 was January 13th and runs until February the 12th at 5:00 PM. Interested persons can contact the City Secretary's Office for details. And coming up, a virtual strategic communication public meeting will be held on January the 21st in English and on the 28th in Spanish with information on Corona vaccines. And on January the 30th, there will be a District 5 cleanup where residents of that district can put large items at the curb for solid waste services to pick them up. Postcards are being mailed to residents in that district to alert them of the free opportunity. And that completes my report.
Thank you, Larry. Before we, we move on to the review of our business session agenda, I recognize that I forgot to open the meeting with a moment of silence per our tradition. So if you would, please don't join me now for a moment of silence. Thank you. We will now resume and move on to our review of our business session agenda.
Mayor?
Yes?
One quick, one quick point of clarification though. Mr. Halsey read in his report that District 1 was up for election. No, she's not.
Been there, done that, huh?
I believe, I believe he meant District 2.
Excellent point of clarification. Thank you, Councilmember. Bradley, would you lead us in our review of the business agenda or the business session agenda?
Yes, sir. We do have two informal reports on the agenda today. The first is an IR 026, which talks through our process we're going to use for the third allocation of Community Development Block Grant CARES money. Deputy City Manager Emerson in that report has outlined a, a community-driven conversation on how to use those dollars, and I look forward to seeing the recommendations for funding in the future. The second IR we've included is a COVID-19 status report. This is a report that will become a standing item at each council meeting from this point forward so that we can continue to communicate with the council and also to the public important information related to COVID-19. Our, obviously, this report highlights testing updates as well as significant updates on vaccines. I will say our team at Waco McLennan County Public Health and, and the Office of Emergency Management really did a fine job pulling together the first vaccination clinic last week and are certainly planning for another this week. Those teams, the health team and the EOC team have been very substantially supported by the IT Department, Fire, Police, Convention Center, Municipal Information, Legal, and, and I'm certain very, a lot more staff here at the city. And I know despite all our efforts, there are still some frustrations that exist in the community right now regarding vaccine rollout, particularly related to the, to the signup process and the waitlist process. It's important to know that these concerns are heard, certainly by the council and the City Manager's Office, and we're working hard to address those concerns. I will say that over the course of about 36 hours, our call center was hit with not quite 20,000 calls for information, and we saw enormous traffic on the covidwaco.com website. That indicates to me that there is a lot of demand out in the marketplace for this vaccine. And our number one limitation here in getting it out is the number of doses and allocation that we receive locally. We just aren't at the point where we have wide availability. Our team, including the mayor, will continue to advocate to the state on behalf of our community for increased doses, and we'll do our best to bring those vaccines equitably to the entire community and the surrounding region.
City Manager Ford, if I can just add a few comments. First of all, I want to thank you for both informal reports. It's on the informal report 026 is very good news to receive, to see that we're receiving additional money for the CDBG CARES Act, something to the tune of $930,000. We know that during COVID-19, it's no secret that every entity, every organization, every government, governmental entity has been impacted. And to see this type of relief, as a council member, I'm very appreciative of this coming through. And I'm also very excited that, that we're going to put together a group or committee of, of community stakeholders that are going to see how this money can be best allocated. So I really want to thank you for that and thank you for, you know, just being all-inclusive to various organizations and, and communities that we have here in, in Waco. As far as informal report 027, also thank you so much for the information that was provided. And I know that there's quite an interest in the vaccination process right now. It is no secret that the Health District has been bombarded by requests for the vaccines. And it is also no secret that the Health District staff and City Manager's Office have been working tirelessly, even on holidays, to make sure that all of the vaccines get out in an equitable manner. And I know the paper ran a news article a couple of days ago, but you know, I, I, you know, I think we've all heard the rumblings of, 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 you know, people trying to log into covidwaco.com or law, or call and, and the, the number is either busy or they can't get through or the slots are filled immediately. And that's just the reality of where we're at. The demand is very high, but the supply is low. And, and correct me if I'm wrong, but we are only receiving 1,500 doses of vaccine a week right now. And that's only, or not even 10% of the total vaccines that are coming into the county as a whole. So I, I, I know that, that is very frustrating, but also, you know, it's encouraging to know that there are hospitals out there that are also, also offering the vaccine, doctors' offices and other Walgreens, CVS, H B N. So I, I know that there's a high demand. I know that people want the vaccine and that's a great thing. But, but unfortunately, we can only give the amount that the state is allowing us at this time. And so we're not holding any back. We're not holding any in stock. We don't have 60,000 in, in, in City Manager's Office or something like that, you know, hidden. I mean, we're, we're giving them out as much as possible. And so I, I tell the people, you know, please be patient with us. I know that staff is looking for more strategic and flexible ways of how we can get the vaccine now. But the reality is that we're still only getting 1,500 a week as of right now. And so when you look at the demographic and the number of people that we have in the county, that's just a, a drop in the bucket. And so I really say that to really congratulate the Health District on what they've done. I, I even want to thank the Health District on their transparency of getting the vaccine now, which is very, very important, I know, to counsel. And so I know that we have a long road ahead of us, but we're going to get there. Thank you.
This is Holmes. I'll just, I'll echo a lot of what Councilmember Sabido, our Mayor Pro Tem Sabido. Am I back in now? Good. I'll echo what Councilmember Sabido said. You know, I want to thank the Public Health District for, as we navigate through these kind of uncharted waters and the pandemic and specifically to vaccine distribution. Some parts of this are mandated at the state as far as what, what the eligibility guidelines are, what the dosage, certainly what the dosage availability is. So some of this is out of our hands locally. And with each batch that we get, I think we're doing our best to get the process improved. And we want this to be a fair and equitable distribution of, of the dosage. And, you know, I think it's possible that we perhaps evolve into some sort of centralized registration. We see some other counties doing that. You know, people don't like the race to the phone kind of a deal or some, some folks that don't have a level of computer skills. So I think we're being sensitive at all that and our system will continue to improve. And I think we want to make sure that everyone has an equal shot at getting the shot. So I, I want to hats off to Public Health District and as we get more doses, I'm, I'm sure the sys, the, the process and situation will get better and better. I appreciate everybody's patience.
I know City Manager Ford, we don't want to belabor this, but I do want to echo my council members in our incredible gratitude for our Health District standing this up, standing our clinic up, the willingness for, to be a hub, which includes areas that are not just McLennan County. So understand that as we are looking at the hundreds of thousands that are McLennan County residents, we're also including people in the, what is the region, Region Group M that also has access to the information that we are a hub site for the state of Texas, right? And I'm wondering if, because, you know, we only have what we're issued, which is the 1,500 per whatever, because I know what we don't want is like our, our, our neighboring county to have made reservations and registrations for people and not receive their dosage. And so then they had to cancel all of those things. So I know we have to balance all of that and how we do this and how we set up our things. But because there are more than just the 1,500 per whatever it is, we, you know, because it, we serve at the pleasure of the state, so I can't give a frequency to that. I'm curious as to, is there any accountability or transparency for the issuance of dosages from the other entities that have vaccines to give? The many pharmacies that are listed on the COVID Waco dashboard or the state of Texas' dashboard, because there are several. I mean, HEB, it looks, if you look down, it says 100, 100, 100, 100, 100. And, but if you call, let's say we don't have it. So I mean, is there some sort of, of accountability or some sort of transparency? Because, you know, I mean, you know, we signed up for this, right? But I need folks to know that, 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 that we are not the only place that has vaccines. But if there is no real transparency in, in, in what they have in their availability, then that looks problematic on us. And while we're, you know, our job is to find the answers, but I know that there's some more partners in this that we have that potentially could offer some of those answers for us.
Councilperson Bearfield, I think that's an excellent point, excellent question you raise. I do know in our conversations directly with dishes at the state, we've made it clear that when they give us a vaccine, it goes in an arm. And we are quick and efficient to get it out. And that if there are providers in our region that maybe are not as efficient and quick to get it in an arm, we'd love to, to have access to those doses because we've got a system that works in terms of a delivery system. We have a delivery system that can scale up significantly from the current dosage level that we're operating under. I'll ask Deputy City Manager to provide any further commentary on that question if she has any.
And since you said, you know, vaccines in arms, you know, do we have a, a, a data on, on, on what our waste count is?
Yeah, we, we've not experienced any waste out of the Public Health District. In fact, we, our last allocation of 1,500, we actually vaccinated 1,546. And so we consistently are reaching out to those smaller entities to find out, you know, where they are, we can, and if they need help, we are willing to work with them to transfer those doses to us and/or help them issue their doses. So we are continuing to maintain those conversations and we've made that really clear to the state as well.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you.
The last thing I'll just say is I, I want to co-sign on everything that council members had previously said. I think you said it better than, than I could, but we did have a call with the state Friday evening to basically communicate the things that we're just communicated. And we're looking forward to continuing to be transparent with our community. And I will comment more on this on the press conference tomorrow where we will give a holistic picture of vaccinations in the state and McLennan County as well as our Public Health District. We're going to improve where we need to improve. I think signing up is probably the area that needs the most work. But also I want to commend the good work that we have done to ensure that we are getting people vaccinated in a way, in my opinion, other than the, where we can improve on the signups, doing as well as anyone else can do to run a public vaccination clinic for a community our size. So more information on that to come tomorrow, and we're committed to, again, ensuring this is done with best practices, equitably, and in a way that is going to meet the needs of our community. So thanks for the hard work to city staff and we'll talk soon. More, we'll talk more on this soon.
Thanks, Mayor and Council, for those comments. It really is encouraging to the team to hear them. We do have one public hearing on the agenda today and it'll be covered by Clint Peters later in the work session. Resolutions-wise, we have 15 resolutions on the agenda today, and I'd like to highlight just a couple. The first, there are two resolutions on the agenda this evening, Resolutions 2021-036 and 037. They're related to one another and highlight a new manufacturing company making its way into Waco. Uzine Uts is a German-based firm that intends to manufacture flooring installation products from a new building in Waco's industrial district. The company has committed to bringing or creating 42 full-time jobs with an average wage of $51,000 and each job paying more than $15 an hour. In exchange, the company, in exchange for the company investing more than $31 million into a new building, the city of Waco would provide a business grant for real property, for the real property investment for 50% over 10 years. And on personal property, the equipment and things like that in the building, they'll be provided a, a grant process on a declining scale, starting at 40% in 2023 and ending at 5% in 2029. Staff estimates that the city will retain about $1.2 million in direct taxes between 2023 and 2032, even after, for accounting for the business grant reimbursements. The project also qualifies for a Waco McLennan County Economic Development Corporation grant of $2 million, with half of that being funded by the city and the other half being funded by the county. And this new WEMAC grant comes on the heels of, of quite a year, as y'all are well aware, in which we've supported about $18 million of WEMAC projects. Upon the approval of the Uzine Uts grant, the WEMAC fund will have a balance of approximately $11.4 million. I do want to give special thanks to the Economic Development Team that worked this project again, led by Chris Collins at the Greater Waco Chamber and her team, as well as on the city staff standpoint, City Attorney Ritchie, as well as Kent George, the city's Economic Development Manager.
City Manager Ford, if I can add a few comments to this, Resolution 36 and 37. It is great to see 2021 starting off like this. As you mentioned, we're coming off of a great 2020 for economic development in the city of Waco, and to see these type of investments and job creations that are going on in our city is very encouraging. I know 42 full-time jobs does not sound like a lot, but when you look at the quality of these jobs and, and it could be life-changing for some of our constituents and, and that the, that the median range would be, you know, above 51 and each job is at least $15 an hour plus benefits. And so I think that's a very good thing and I'm very excited about Uzine Uts coming into our, our city. And then, as you mentioned, you know, the tax, the, the tax, the property taxes that we were receiving the first 10 years of around $1.2 million, I think it's just beneficial for the city. So overall, thank you to our Economic Development Team, to the Chamber, to the city of Waco's management staff. And so these two resolutions have my full support.
This is Holmes. I will again echo Mayor Pro Tem Sabido on his sentiments here. I've, I've spent a long time on council here with a lot of economic development goals that just have culminated into a very productive fourth, third and fourth quarter here in 2020, where we have had, a lot of businesses are now understanding how great Waco is and are moving here with good jobs, good property tax base, and, and I'm excited about that. And I think we're well positioned here for economic development here in the near term. And we've got a lot of, a lot of projects just on the horizon and literally on the horizon is, as you go by there with the Amazon building, watching that go up is just fascinating and encouraging. And these, these businesses, I think, fall into that category too. I'm happy to see Uzine Uts getting into Waco and, and setting at least this incentive plan up for them. It may be, you know, as we, as, it may be time to reset maybe some of the levels of, of, of incentives as, as we have to be more thoughtful about how we spend our incentive dollars going forward. But still, I'm excited about these kind of businesses finding Waco an attractive place to relocate. And that is so encouraging and the ripple effect on jobs and standards of living and what we have for Waco on the near-term horizon is just very exciting. So I'm very supportive of this, of this project.
As a German speaker, I'm very excited to finally have an outlet in Waco, Texas to utilize my German. So willkommen by Waco to our friends in Germany. I think to affirm what Councilmember Holmes said, I think we're in a really exciting moment in Waco's economic development history. Since I've been on council, we've already pushed millions of dollars and secured a couple hundred jobs. So I definitely echo and want to affirm this desire to have more competitive bids going forward, recognizing we have a limited amount of dollars, particularly when there is the development grant piece representing District 4, where over 44% of my neighbors have, are making less than $25,000 a year. I'm really wanting to see that job piece be really, really strong. We have a low employment rate in Waco, but we have a pretty high underemployment rate. And so that's the piece that will make this more enticing to me in the future. But I love what Mayor Pro Tem said, that it's that $51,000 median income that is enticing. So this is a yes for me, but I think there are some things we can do, looking at the rest of the fiscal year to make this a little bit more competitive.
Thanks, councilmembers, for those comments. Councilmember Palmer, I look forward to hearing a critique on how I pronounce the company's name at a later date.
Yabba.
Our, our next resolution I'd like to highlight is 2021-038. It ratifies an agreement with McLennan County Community College that allowed their students enrolled in health professions programs to glint, to gain experience at the Health District. And their participation was critical last week in the success of the vaccine clinic and certainly will remain critical in the days to come and into the future. And we're just so grateful for their work and this agreement that, that really benefited us in the vaccine distribution effort. So thanks to MCC and, and their role in our community.
They've been doing work with the COVID testing as well.
They've been doing work with the COVID testing as well, yes?
I'm looking for some confirmation from Deputy City Manager, but I believe that's correct.
I'd have, need to check on the, on the testing piece. It, if so, it was in the earlier stages of the testing. They definitely have been involved in our, um, vaccination process and, um, we plan and have already confirmed with them for future, um, opportunities.
I mean, I think it's wonderful, I, you know, any opportunity that, that our students are actively engaged in the process and helping, you know, their fellow man in, in absolutely on the front lines is, is a plus for me and a yes for me. Uh, coupled with the fact that that's District One, um, I'm always eager and excited to see, uh, to see our MCC students going above and beyond, cause that's what MCC students do.
I'll just briefly comment as well that this is, um, I, I wanna thank Dr. McCown and her team for this. Vaccinators, um, right now, the, 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 the number one bottleneck is getting vaccines to our um, community, but the, the next bottleneck at some point, um, would, would be vaccinators. And so I'm, I'm really thankful for, um, our city staff and public health district staff for really developing a ro- robust plan to train vaccinators to be prepared to, um, meet the, the need in our community. And I'm thankful for Dr. McCown, her team and MCC for responding because this is, um, such a, um, public good, um, matter. And so I'm really thankful for their help.
One last thought along those lines. I think this is such a, um, win for the city because it, it benefits both sides across, um, our COVID response. We, we're not shy on space, uh, we're shy on people and having these sort of trained students ready to go is a huge win for us as a community. But it's also to Councilwoman Bearfield's point, it's a great learning opportunity for all these students. And down the line, they will be leaders that have been tried and tested being on the front line. So I think this is just an awesome partnership. Massive kudos to everyone involved.
All right. The, the last set of resolutions I do wanna highlight today are Resolution twenty twenty-one, oh four oh and oh four one, um, which involve the financing and purchase of a total of seven fire apparatus consisting of six pumper trucks and one aerial truck, more commonly known as a ladder truck. Um, these items, um, you know, normally a city gets excited when they buy one fire truck. Um, Waco's doing it upright and doing seven at a time. And that's needed because currently the average age of our eighteen primary apparatus, our frontline apparatus is nineteen and a half years old. And after this purchase, um, and delivery, um, the average age of the apparatus will drop to nine and a half years of age. And we anticipate that, um, this refresh of the apparatus will lead to a reduction in downtime due to repairs and maintenance, and will also be a benefit to maintaining our ISO one rating that's valuable to the community. A committee, so you're aware, a committee of fire staff and city fleet staff chose the recommended vendor, Metro Fire Spartan Solution, after considering a number of factors, including the manufacturer's reputation, the product type and reliability, the warranty provided, the availability of parts and maintenance, as well as past performance for Waco Fire and service after the sale. I will say regarding the, the financial agreement noted in Resolution oh four oh, the new apparatus are being, um, acquired on a ten-year lease with an interest rate of less than one point four percent. At the end of the lease, the apparatus will be fully owned by the city of Waco. Um, and while using lease financing on large equipment like this is unusual for us as a city, we feel like the terms allow us the shortest acquisition time to have a positive impact on the fire department and our community. It gives us incredible, uh, financing value in terms of the rate. And it fits the useful life of the equipment better to other financing methods. I appreciate our, our finance staff as well as, uh, the fire staff for both of these items.
Sounds like a, a big win for the city here and glad to see we're upgrading, uh, those trucks and applaud the fire department, the city manager's office for doing this, especially to think that some of those units are out there with cassette decks. Uh, this seems like a timely upgrade.
Yeah, well played.
You know, uh, yes, Councilmember Boruto tells very good. Uh, I, I think, you know, most cities would be excited to get one fire truck. Um, and for us to be able to get seven, um, in one year at such a low interest rate. Um, I mean, obviously, the, the standard that the Waco Fire Department had set is high. Um, and I believe that these new apparatuses would just take them even higher. I mean, uh, especially with the ranking that they have. Uh, and so I'm very excited that, that they are going to get, the first responders are going to get the much-needed uh, resources and products that they need to do their jobs on a daily basi- basis, but also quality resources and products. So, so I'm in very much support of these two resolutions.
Uh, this is Holmes. I'll echo Josh and Hector there. Um, you know, on council, we go through tax incentive programs and half a billion dollar budgets and, uh, vaccination process, but what we also get to buy fire trucks, which is kind of a cool thing. Uh, and I think it's, it's great that we have, uh, are keeping track of, of making sure that we have best-in-class fire and safety, which I think has always been a goal of this council, and replacing those units with the, with the new operating, uh, I'm guessing with CDs now, or maybe this is not, no, not cassettes anymore. John, what is the latest technology? Uh, but anyway, also the structure of this lease is pretty impressive, the one point three five percent and getting creative on how to, how to finance these. So I know in the past councils, we've had to kind of parse these in, you know, one or two at a time, uh, because they are, you know, they're expensive units. They're between, you know, uh, half a million and a million dollars. Uh, but anyway, just, just having the, uh, our, uh, fire department equipped with the, the best-in-class, uh, equipment, I think is very important and, uh, very much in favor of these resolutions.
Thanks, councilmembers, for those comments. We, um, we do enjoy bringing a, a good financial strategy item forward that also benefits public safety. That's, uh, that's one that we're proud to bring forward. On the agenda today, we do have four ordinances for your consideration. Um, three are on second reading. There's only one first reading, and it's ordinance twenty twenty-one, oh four nine, which amends our code of ordinances in both the Buildings and Building Regulations Chapter and the Fire Prevention and Protect- Protection Chapter to adopt the twenty eighteen international codes and the twenty twenty national, National Electric Code. And if there's no, uh, questions, that concludes my report, Mayor.
Bradley, I have just one quick comment on the resolution, uh, the first one. Let me go back here. The oh thirty-four, just extending the, the emergency to the, uh, the end of February, which I'm in favor of. The, but within the context of the, of the resolution itself, which has the, um, yeah, it's in several pages. One thing I, I do, and, and not to belabor the, this point, but section nineteen of that resolution, where we talk about boards and commissions, and I, I think for the first part of the pandemic, we've been, uh, uh, very conservative about only making sure that certain ones meet that, uh, that have to just to, to process, uh, legal issues. Um, the, I think there are seven listed there in section nineteen. There are other boards and commissions. I know they've got a lot of appointments to different boards and commissions in the, the city. Uh, at least the District Five appointments are saying, hey, we'd like to meet too, uh, historical landmark, uh, sustainable resources, some other ones. And I know that we've kind of worked out some of the kinks on Zoom meetings, and they're still not as they're definitely not as good as meeting in person, obviously. But on some of those, if we could meet, uh, if we could open up the, some more of those, uh, uh, commissions and boards to people who want to have a voice in the city, uh, and who we've kind of committed to, uh, a year ago, uh, if that's possible. And I don't know if it's in, within the context of this, of this, uh, of this resolution, and maybe it's not in this one, maybe we do it in the next extension, but to look at that again, to maybe allow a few more of those boards and commissions to, uh, meet regularly.
Councilmember Holmes, um, that section nineteen that you reference, um, we've been using to host, uh, with city manager approval, of boards and commissions that aren't specifically listed above can request and host meetings, um, not on an in-person basis, but via Zoom or some alternative format, as long as the, as long as they work with the manager's office in establishing those protocols. So I look forward to supporting, uh, you mentioned two, two boards that may wanna meet. Um, certainly I look forward to supporting that in, as soon as possible.
City Manager Ford, could we send out an email to all of the heads of the boards and commissions that are currently not meeting? Just articulating that, that they are welcome to meet, um, but they need to coordinate with your office.
I think it's a great suggestion. We'll have that out shortly.
Awesome. Thank you.
All right. Mayor, I'll turn it back to you, sir.
Great. Are there any items council would like to remove from the consent agenda? We ever, uh, received a speaker card for Resolution twenty twenty-one dash forty-one. Um, and Esmeralda, have we received any other speaker cards at this time?
Not for resolution items. No, sir.
Great. So consent, uh, the consent agenda includes resolutions twenty twenty-one, uh, dash thirty-four through twenty twenty-one dash forty-eight, with the exception of Resolution twenty twenty-one dash forty-one. I will now ask City Manager Bradley Ford to introduce the first work session.
Thanks, Mayor. First work session is twenty twenty-one dash oh two eight. It'll be discussion of planning public hearing items. It'll be led by Clint Peters, our Development Services Director. Clint?
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. We do just have the one public hearing doing, during, uh, dealing with, uh, two subdivision plats. Uh, these are two new residential, uh, developments, uh, coming into our city. Uh, the first one is a preliminary plat of Eagles Landing Edition. Uh, this is a new single-family residential subdivision being developed by WBW Development in the China Spring area of our city limits, off of a Tree Lake, uh, road in Arnett. Uh, it consists of fifty-eight acres out of a larger three hundred and fifty acre tract that you can see here. Uh, most of that three hundred and fifty acres, uh, is in the five oh three flow adjizment, uh, for Lake Waco and cannot be developed, so they are breaking out that, uh, fifty-eight acres, uh, for this subdivision here. Uh, it does consist of two hundred and ninety-eight proposed single-family lots, uh, which is, uh, a, a, a denser, uh, single-family residential development, uh, about five units an acre, uh, fifty-foot wide lots. You can see the layout here with Tree Lake being on the north of the map and then Arnett here. Uh, this, this plat, uh, does have area for, uh, um, common space, um, for the residents of the subdivision. And because it is, um, a little denser than what we normally see with single-family residential, they have included sidewalks on all the streets, uh, which is not a requirement of ordinance, but the, uh, developer wanted to have that, uh, because of the density. Um, this one and the next plat are a little bit unique. Um, there is not onsite, uh, detention ponds uh, because of its proximity to the, the Lake Waco, uh, flow adjizment. We do have a, a, an exception, uh, where they can put, put their drainage directly into the flow adjizment without detention. Uh, and then you can see the remainder of the property that will be left undeveloped. There's a, there is a single, single-family home there, and that's the intent of the, the property owner that's selling off the fifty-six acres for the development is to keep that undeveloped. Uh, the next, uh, development is our Deer, Deer Valley Estates Edition. Uh, this is out in the Highway eighty-four corridor, uh, along Spiegelville Road, and then up against the Middle Boski River. Uh, Swanson Development Company is a developer on this one. Uh, this is a, a less dense subdivision. It's a hundred and eight acres uh, out of a hundred and eighty-nine acre tract. And again, you can see the orange line on here, there is that five oh three flow adjizment. So the back portion of this property is, uh, is not developable. The, um, there is gonna be a large eighty-acre tract that's kept, and you can see it here on the map, for, uh, just a single-family home. Uh, and then the back portion of the property, about forty-two acres, is gonna be in a minute area for the subdivision that's in that, uh, that five oh three flow adjizment along, uh, Middle Boski River. The, uh, the subdivision does have ninety-three lots, which is less than, uh, one unit per acre. Uh, these lots are almost about a half acre per lot. Um, and then same, same situation as the last one, they, they will not have onsite detention. It will drain directly into, uh, the Middle Boski River, which is allowed under ordinance. Uh, those are the two plats. They are, uh, recommended for approval by the Plan Commission. Um, it is a little bit different than what we usually see with our recommendations. Uh, Plan Commission, uh, heard these two subdivision plats at their December meeting and recommended approval with conditions. Uh, and then under the new state law that was approved and followed, uh, twenty nineteen, uh, which is the House Bill thirty-one sixty-seven, uh, developer can submit responses to those conditions, and then the Plan Commission has to act on those within fifteen days, uh, or it's automatically recommended for approval and moves on the city council. Uh, because of the holidays and the schedule, we weren't able to get another Plan Commission meeting scheduled, a special call, uh, Plan Commission me- meeting scheduled to act on these plats. Uh, so they do come, uh, with a recommendation of approval automatically. Uh, staff has reviewed, uh, the responses on those conditions, and those are included in your packets, and they do, uh, staff that has determined that they, they have met all those, uh, conditions that the Plan Commission did, uh, put on the plats at their December fourteenth meeting.
So Clint, kind of summarize what, what happened and it, there's a new state law that requires that, uh, the Plan Commission respond to the developers' uh, comments to the proposed conditions. Our Plan Commission was not able to meet, to respond to the developer. And so, as a result, the recommendation will come as a straight approval, not approval with conditions, but regardless, they met those initial conditions.
That's, that's correct. That's
Okay.
Exactly right.
So even though it's coming as a recommendation of straight approval, they met the conditions that were originally asked by, uh, the Plan Commission and by staff.
That's correct.
Okay, okay. Thank you. I'm sorry. I was just trying to follow.
Yeah, it, it is confusing, but that is exactly correct. And that's all I have.
Uh, this is Holmes. Yeah, Josh, thanks for clarifying that. Uh, that was what was going through my mind, and that, that does make sense. Hey, uh, Clint, I just had one question on the Eagles Landing Edition, uh, plating. And then just basically a comment or a request of a comment on what are our standards for green space? I know that, the, the, with, we've got some plans going forward on how that looks, but what, and where is the green space on, on this plat? I was looking for that.
Yeah, so the, the way the ordinance reads, uh, council may, uh, require up to five percent of the subdivision uh, to be in some sort of usable area for recreation. Uh, this, uh, so that was a requirement, uh, from staff and the Plan Commission, and they did. Uh, you can see it's, it's a linear area right here. Uh, it's almost about, uh, almost two and a half, a little bit more than two and a half acres. Uh, that will, that will be, uh, uh, homeowners association managed and, uh, maintained. Uh, they plan to have a, a little trail system in there and some amenities that will connect to, to the subdivision right there.
And that constitutes five percent of that whole thing?
It, it's a little less, uh, than five percent, but it, it's pretty close.
Okay. Right. That's, that's all I wanted. Thanks, Clint.
Uh, on, on this one for me, I think what I would love to get better clarity on at, at a, maybe a, a future agenda ti- uh, um, item, Clint, is, is a discussion. And, and I know that we're kind of commencing a discussion on housing, including in the core of the city, all the way to the, the green fill areas. And I think my question would be, what is an appropriate density for new development if we're, if we're putting on our seventy-year goggles? Um, what, what is, what is, um, good city practice in terms of, of density and, and trying to st- strike a balance of, um, ensuring that there is good affordable housing, um, but at the same time that we're, um, playing our part to make sure that we are, um, uh, building communities that are, that are going to, um, stand the test of time. So I, I, I don't have clarity. I, I think that I could, I would like to learn from our planning department kind of what your recommendations and best practices would be. But maybe specifically for this deal, are you comfortable with the density on this one, on the, the item on the screen right now?
So the, the, the So the, the densities that's proposed does meet the, the zoning requirements, the minimum lot size for zoning, which is R one B zoning that requires a minimum of six, six thousand square feet per lot. I, I would say with our comprehensive plan, there are some recommendations that to look at those minimum lot size requirements. And that is something that we are looking at through our subdivision ordinance rewrite and zoning ordinance rewrite. That we, you know, plan to have out a draft out the next couple of months for review. But, you know, the, the, just to kind of give you an overview of what the, the plan recommends, it, it, in these areas, in these greenfield areas, they, they do have a recommendation to have a, maybe a larger lot than what's required in our existing zoning. If you're just doing a standard subdivision, or if you want to do cluster development, a smaller lot and, and higher density, that's okay, but you need to have a higher level of amenities, open space, sidewalks and those type of things to support that density. And so those, those are some of the things that we'll be looking at when we propose our new subdivision and zoning ordinance rewrites.
Great. We look forward to that.
Because Clint, currently there are not sidewalks planned for this. Is that correct?
No, there are. There'll, there'll be this subdivision, there'll be sidewalks on all the, the streets, on, on the boundary streets, existing streets, Tree Lake and Arnett, and then all of the internal streets will have sidewalks as well.
Thank you.
And Clint Holmes, one more question. So that is a condition that sidewalks go in there or is that just voluntary? Just to follow what Josh said.
So the, the ordinance requires it along collectors, which can be a neighborhood collector or, you know, like, like Tree Lake, which is a true collector street. The developer has decided voluntarily decided to include sidewalks on all the internal streets as well as part of the preliminary plat. So once the preliminary plat is approved with that note on the, the plat, then that will be a requirement of the future.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Thanks, council members for the questions for Clint and otherwise we'll move on to our next work session. I'm actually going to call this a little out of order. And next up invite work session twenty twenty one oh three zero. The discussion of Waco Regional Airport, including performance activities, projects and grants. We'll be inviting Joel Martinez, our Director of Aviation to make this presentation. And I look forward to hearing the update he's going to provide. Well?
Give me one second. I'm working on sharing my screen.
And I want to apologize. I'm calling it out of order and catching Joel off guard here. So thank you, Joel, for bearing with me.
No, I was ready.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Again, I'm Joel Martinez, Director of Aviation for the City of Waco. And it's my pleasure to bring you this status report of airport operations, which includes some of the upcoming projects as well. We're going to talk about some of the current levels of air service and usage of airline development. I'll talk about some of the current projects and where they are and what that process is. And then we'll also define and describe some of the funding and how these products are funded through both the FAA Airport Improvement Program as well as the FAA Cares Act. Currently, American Airlines flies three to four flights a day. And we're seeing that number increase back and rebound a little bit. And we're seeing our employment numbers, what we're showing you here. You can see where the beginning part of the year, we were on, on track to, to see, I guess, growth in our employment numbers. And obviously with the pandemic, you can see where that, there was a steep decline. But I think that our, our travelers are returning back to normal. And so we're looking, we're expecting that to come back as travel restrictions lighten up. One of the things, one of the positive things that we like to track and one of the conversations that I have regarding air service and some of our community members concerned about flying in and out of Waco is our reliability. So I have tracked the air service reliability. As you can see, American performed extremely well, for the exception of April and May, based on what, what you see there, obviously in response to the pandemic. But after some modifications and stabilization of, of their schedule, they've returned back to their really good performance. And you will notice that there are some months where we exceeded the number of scheduled flights. Just to kind of clarify some of that. When flights divert because of bad weather at DFW or other airports, they land here in Waco and passengers get off the aircraft. And when they get back on the airplane going back to DFW, then that qualifies them as a flight from Waco. And so that's why those numbers you see over a hundred percent performance on some of those months. To, again, to improve on some of the air service and the air service improvements for our community. Some of the air service for our community. There are a couple of things that we're doing as staff to prepare that. We are preparing the, a grant application, as you see on City Council today. It's the Small Community Air Service Development Grant Program. That will allow the airport to have a, to have a revenue guarantee for a second carrier. And what that'll also do is that'll also agree, create an opportunity for the airport to market that new service for that. Also, not part of that grant, but also part of a policy moving forward. The airport's developing air service incentive policy, which will come to council in the coming, in the coming months. That'll allow the airport to waive fees and again, to develop a marketing and advertising campaign for new air service as we move forward. Again, to attract additional service because that is, along with reliability, you know, we do have a, a constant dialogue with the community stakeholders regarding second air service. Moving on to some of the other airport activities, some of the airport project planning. Before we get into the projects themselves, I kind of wanted to step back and kind of clarify how some of our projects are funded and, and how we plan those projects along. The Airport Master Plan was completed in, in two thousand and eighteen. It was a two, it was a two-year process. It was approved by City Council. We forwarded those plans to the FAA so they can make that part of their larger funding package for the region, for the Southwest Region United States. These projects are then vetted by the FAA, not only moving forward, but they also review our previous projects to see, or to ensure that we've been able to perform on those projects, whether they come in under budget and on time. And for Waco's benefit, you know, most of our, all of our projects have come in on budget and as scheduled. So that plays very favorably as we move forward in that planning process with the FAA. So some of our airport grant funding as we move forward. Obviously you see a lot of FAA grants coming through on City Council items. And as we plan these projects, we have the FAA Airport Improvement Program, which is determined by the level of air service that the airport sees. And so currently we receive a one million dollar entitlement funding level. And so for projects that exceed that level, you'll see us, you know, from time to time, receive a grant that exceeds the million dollars. Well, then the airport has another opportunity to seek discretionary funding from the FAA. And again, and that's a competitive grant process. Again, where our project and our previous performance kind of comes in and measures that for us. And so we do see that from time to time as well. But in this particular situation, we also have the FAA Cares Act funding. And this is, this allows the airport to do a number of things that I'll describe in a few, in a few slides with you all. And then one of the, one of the opportunities that we also utilize is the tax dot routine airport maintenance or ramp grant. And that allows the airport to, to fund or partially fund some of the activities such as striping, rubber removal and things of that nature. So some of the airport AIP grants that we have seen, some of these have already been completed. You know, we're looking at the acquisition of Runway one nine, some runway protection zone property that was completed in June or May of twenty twenty. We have started the airfield emergency generator project. We are underway on the airport terminal and taxiway Charlie rehab projects as well. Taxiway Charlie is a little further along. We're probably about eighty percent complete on that project. And again, we're on time and, and within our allotted budget for that one. And you will see the, the design and construction of the terminal building, electrical roof and HVAC systems. This project will coincide with the terminal building modernization project that we'll see on the next slide. And so this is kind of a dual funded project that we're, we're addressing several systems at the airport. One, some of the infrastructure needs of the terminal building. And then second, as we come onto the modernization component, some of the, the interior aspects of the, of the terminal as it interacts with passengers. This picture here depicts a taxiway Charlie project. This is the oldest piece of pavement that we've had on the airport. Obviously not, not anymore. It's now the youngest piece of pavement. So again, we've seen some great improvements and this project only, only included the infrastructure of pavement. We did not have electrical components to this, which made that a lot easier. We did have some weather issues, but those weather issues were built into our, into our schedule. Now, the FAA Cares Act, this was an opportunity for us to seize some of the additional funding that was given to us by the FAA. And so what we were able to do with our operating expenses, which includes operating the terminal building, but also salaries for not only the airport staff, we were also able to include salaries that are normally funded through the general fund. We have the fire and police department, which are approximately eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year are funded through the general fund. We're able to, to remove those from that responsibility and cover them by the Cares Act funding. And now that you'll notice the Cares Act also has a four-year performance period. So we're going to, we're going to move that, or we're going to carry that funding out to carry those operating costs until twenty twenty three. Now additional maintenance projects for the airport. The, the, the first two have already been completed, the air traffic control cab, the tower cab glass replacement and mold remediation. The two projects that we're really excited to start moving forward on are the terminal building modernization project and the passenger loading bridge rehab project. Those two projects are going to be, are going to be the, the complete interface for the public when they come into our terminal building. So we're looking at really sprucing up our existing terminal building. We have not touched a terminal building since ninety nine. We're going to be able to address our public bathrooms as well as the boarding bridges, but also our seating and some of the counter spaces and some of that stuff. So when passengers do return for travel, we expect that our terminal building will be a fresh new look for us. And we'll be able to put our best foot forward. These, these here are images of our, of the tower cab glass replacement. These are custom built panels. It was a pretty exciting project for us. And again, it helps the FAA maintain a safe line of sight for air, for air traffic control. Now those were, those were operating and maintenance projects. Now the Cares Act was kind of, there is an opportunity for the airport to have airport development projects. These projects were also outlined in our Airport Master Plan, but there were some funding, I guess, considerations. The city had to fund additional funds for this, or the airport had to develop and create revenues to fund these projects. The stormwater line relocation will help us create building sites for large corporate hangars. And the roadway and parking lot and paving a project allows for us to kind of have, have a better interface. And it'll actually pave an existing parking lot that is utilized by, by Baylor charters and, and when we have overflow or holiday parking. So we're going to pave that. So again, it represents a, a more modern appeal to the travelers as they come through the airport. And so we're looking forward to that. And both those projects are eighty percent complete. And we are gracious enough to be assisted by Public Works and that team over there. They're doing the design work for us. Now the hangar complex project, you know, we're trying to meet a need. We have a current waiting list for both of our hangar sizes. We have kind of a small, what we call a T-hanger. And then we have an executive T-hanger for larger or, or dual engine aircraft. We have a waiting list of about twelve on one and about eight on the other. And so we hope that by building these, not only will we meet that need, but we'll also create a growing revenue source for the airport. Because, you know, that is part of our revenue, or the lease of those hangars. And then one of the other things that didn't require much of the airport funding, but we did track and we do have a lot of communications with our stakeholders, TSA being one of them. One of the things that previously or prior to the installation of this baggage x-ray machine, you know, each check bag was screened by hand, which really slows down the check bag screening process. Well, we had been tracking the number of bags that come through. And again, with the pandemic, it really did not look favorable for us to receive an x-ray machine, but because we had that conversation already kind of in their queue. TSA evaluated some of their equipment across the country and they realized that, hey, we can put this to work in Waco. And so we were ready and poised for them to really call us up early in November and say, hey, we'd like to have a site visit. And within a month or a month and a half, it's installed and, and it's being completely utilized here. And so again, that increases the speed of our check bags. And again, we'll continue to monitor those stakeholder relationships to bring any type of advancement or improvement to the facility. And that concludes what I have for you all this afternoon. I'll definitely take any of your field, any questions you may have.
This is Holmes. I'll kick it off here. Well, thanks for the presentation. Excellent as, as usual. The, the airport is in District Five, so I'm always paying attention to what we're doing out there. And the employment count rebound, I'm, I'm very encouraged by that. I knew intuitively that things were kind of starting to come back, but I didn't realize that it was, that it was getting that, that closer, that, that rate of growth. So that's fantastic. Thanks for that information. You know, I, as I see the Cares Act funding come in on this airport improvements, it sounds like a lot of money, but when you put this into the context of, of what happened in the airline and travel industry here during COVID and as we're just getting out of it. I mean, we've taken a gut shot there and, and that's a very important part of our, of our city is that airport. So I'm happy that we're able to get this funding and put it to good work in basically a stabilizing function. Number one, number two, a lot of deferred maintenance, well, as you, as you outlined. Some long overdue improvements to the hangar and just the terminal modernization, the x-ray machine. Just, it's exciting to see those kind of things happen at our, our airport, our gateway to our city. And then, and then lastly, just freeing up general fund dollars, two million dollars a year, at least for the next four years as we, as we get that funding and use it for the O and M expenses. So good report. You're right on top of everything as usual, Joel, and I appreciate what you're doing out there.
Thank you.
Hey, well, thank you again for the presentation. I have to agree with Councilmember Holmes. That's always wonderful job on the presentation. And it's great to hear all of the exciting things that are going on in the airport. I do want to thank you also for including the employment count because even in the year of twenty twenty, like COVID, the COVID nineteen hit. For us to even in many months, not just a couple of months, but in many months, months surpass the number of flights that were scheduled, says a lot about the Waco Airport and the activity that's going on there and how people are coming out. I know there's even been talks about possibly American pulling out of Waco Airport and that's not the, that's not the case at all. Even to the, to, to the, even in your presentation, you, you alluded to the grant for the second carrier to come out of the Waco Airport, I think is great news. And that's just to show that demand that it's coming out of the Waco Regional Airport. I have to say, I agree with Councilmember Holmes for all of the projects and improvements and updates and maintenance that you've done at the airport. And that money has come out of grants that we've received and not out of our operational budget, just says a lot. And so overall, I've seen nothing but great news coming out of the Waco Airport. And so thank you to you and your leadership and your staff that, that have just, have been open to the changes that are taking place, that have been quick on your feet and, and had been nimble to, to make sure that you keep up with the changes. And so Councilmember Bearford, that's still your word nimble. And, and, and so I just want to say thank you. And I look forward to all of the more great things that are coming from the Waco Regional Airport. So great job.
Thank you.
Hi, Joel. Love, love the presentation. Excited to see Waco Airport developing and modernizing. All regional airports are not created equally and so excited to see this one developing. What did you, what did you? What did you what did you say the timeline is that we can expect to see the terminal renovations?
Our expected completion is for December of twenty twenty-one. That's what we're pushing for there.
And I lived in Santa Barbara for a while and we had a great regional airport there that was like really beautiful inside, that felt really reflective of the city. Have has there been much conversations along design lines of how we can kind of capture some of the spirit of our community in the terminal?
Well, we have, I guess, the architect that we have on staff or that we that we contracted out in November. That is part of their task is to basically design, give us a design and to take the input from our community and some for some of our stakeholders to ensure that their finished product actually does represent the community. So yes, ma'am, we we're trying to address that, Councilman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Howell, for an insightful presentation. I, I mean, pre-COVID. You know, not like, you know, the the everyday businessmen and women that fly in and out of airports, but you know, we fly enough. And how exciting is it to know that we'll be getting a much-needed facelift? I was, I didn't know ninety-nine. I was like, okay. But I know this is an opportunity for our first impression. And as Councilmember Palmer mentioned, you know when you go into a good airport and you know when you, oh, oh, that's neat, you know. And the unfortunate is a deputy city manager Emerson knows that when I was traveling, I'd be sending snapshots of airports from there and yawn. Because I'm like, oh, look, this is neat, you know, oh, look at this artwork, look at this. And I think that's important that, you know, we are now having the capability to capture that outside of our general funds. So we appreciate the stewardship and and diligence of staff looking at at these grant opportunities to to create a wonderful first impression for those people going in and out of the Waco Regional Airport. Now, with the new screening, bagging, baggage equipment, that means that people like myself will have to be on time for the flights. So I'm good. Thank you for the heads up because I I know me. So I would, but I'm real excited about the fact that they don't have to go by hand anymore. But that just means I need to add about another thirty into. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
I'll go really quickly, just to echo what's already been said. One thing that I wanted to note is the cancellation rate. I was very pleased to hear that. And I think that what's interesting is that our cancellation rate is low, but there's for some reason this reputation that there's this great cancellation rate with Waco Airlines. And I think that to see that it being it being so low is something that that we need to consider how we market that. So I think that we do need to explore how to get the word out to our business community. I know Bradley, I believe, is in process of expanding his economic development team. And I think that in collaboration with the CBB and and Economic Development Team that they can work potentially with you, Howell, to make sure that our business community and our tourism industry and just our flying families that might be flying are really well aware that that the data shows that the the odds are very much in the favor of you being able to fly out and fly back when you book a flight in Waco. So I think that's something that we need to really pull together some some strategies around. And it might be multi-departmental to to look at that. And I think we would all acknowledge that the capital improvements at the the airport, like runways and all the other other capital improvements you're doing are the most important. We want to get get flights in the air. But this council definitely has high value on the aesthetic of our terminal. So I would say that that might be something is in within the year is you get renderings potentially or kind of start start moving forward with that. That might be something that we'd like to take a second glance at. Because it it does, I I share and what other council members have referenced of the importance of this first impression or the importance of this this design. And so while I I do care more that the the runways are in good shape and the plane gets in the air, if we are going to be looking at the terminal, I think it would be helpful for this council to get get their eyes on that too. And also very excited about the new carrier possibility. I think that's something that we need to continue to think strategically and outside the box on. And the more flights fly out of our airport and flying into our area, the better for families, for tourists and for our our business folks and our economy. So excited to continue to dream big and think outside the box and and leverage every opportunity we can for that. So great days ahead.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Mayor and Council for that review. Thanks, Howell, as well. We will, we'll work back towards work session twenty twenty-one oh two nine. I'm gonna ask my chief of staff, Ashley Nystrom, to join. We had intended for Ashley and Carol Magara, who's the Chief Executive Officer of Blackridge, our Government Affairs Consultant, to provide a a discussion of the eighty-seventh Texas Legislature and our legislative priorities. Unfortunately, Carol's not able to join us this afternoon. She's not feeling well. And so Ashley's gonna brief this item and we anticipate Carol will come back for a mid-session update in the coming weeks. Ashley?
Thanks, Bradley. And like Bradley said, I'm Ashley Nystrom, Chief of Staff here in the City Manager's Office. I am glad to be here with you all today. And I was looking forward to having Carol because she is the content expert. But we'll look forward to having her back with us mid-session. Blackridge is our legislative consulting firm. You'll also see in addition to this discussion on the agenda today, there is a renewal of our contract with them. We have contracted with them for ten years now. And they bring immense value to Waco with their knowledge and expertise and connections at the state legislature. Bringing to you the discussion today of the eighty-seventh Texas Legislative Session, which commenced on Tuesday, January twelfth last week. What Bradley graciously didn't tell you was that I almost posted us to talk about the eighty-sixth Legislative Session, which really would have been an easier job because it's much easier to talk about what they have done versus trying to predict what might come out of the next five months. So of course, over the last, like so many other things over the last year, session will look very different this year due to COVID nineteen. So I'll start us out with a discussion of what we might expect from session. And then I'll close us out with some of our local priorities and focus areas. So just logistics in general for the session, they do have the standard public health precautions. But there was not a lot of an appetite at the legislature to change any virtual testimony or input rules. So we do expect with the COVID nineteen pandemic and restrictions, there will be some increased difficulty for the public in providing public input and accessing the legislative process in light of these extra restrictions. The comptroller released a much better estimate than was anticipated last week. The budget is looking much more promising than it was with a one billion dollar deficit, which while not great, is far better than a four and a half billion dollar deficit that they were originally expecting. So this session, we are optimistic particularly that the public education improvements and increased funding that was made last session last session will hold this session and that we likely won't see a hit to that public education funding like many were worried about. So the three main priorities we expect to come out of this session are, of course, the budget. Their one task, every legislative session that they have to pass. Redistricting is another big discussion this year. And then the COVID nineteen pandemic. It is not outside the realm of possibility and is actually very likely that redistricting will have to come back to a special session in July. They likely won't have the census data that they need for that process before the end of the regular session. And then there are several large and or controversial items that we can expect this session. First, as has been discussed throughout the last year, what should the scope of the governor's emergency powers be during a pandemic or a declared disaster? And we'll see some debate and consideration of limiting this authority during these types of events. And then a significant percentage of the bills that have been filed to date, so filing began in November. A significant percentage of these bills have been filed regarding law enforcement, police and criminal justice reform. So we'll see a lot of discussion and debate on that this session as well. And then Medicaid availability is the new term at the Texas Capitol. This will be a topic of discussion with more legislators being in favor of broadening the availability, which is a more palatable term than expansion here in Texas. So another thing to watch for. We expect there to also be a serious attempt to get better broadband access across the state. And so that leads me, that is one of our local priorities as well for increased broadband infrastructure here in Waco and McLennan County. So that does lead me. In past sessions, we have brought to council a community priorities document that is established in collaboration with several entities within Waco and McLennan County, including the chambers and the foundations. We expect to bring that to you soon at an upcoming council meeting for consideration. But I would briefly like to highlight some of the specific local government priorities we have for this session. We are advocating to the state for the preservation of our ability to work with lobby firms. Anti-lobby bill is a big priority for both sides of the legislature. Particularly, we want to preserve this ability for the expertise and cost savings that it brings to cities like us. The work that Carol and her team do for us would take a team of governmental affairs staffers and a travel budget that we just don't have. So here in Waco, I am the chief of staff, but I'm also our legislative liaison. And I'm very grateful this year that I have an intern who is is helping keep track of some of these bills. But the the work that Carol and her team does is invaluable for us. We'll also be advocating for additional COVID nineteen support, particularly for direct federal relief funding to small and mid-sized local governments and for an increased per capita allocation from the state for the allocations that were made in mid-two thousand twenty. So that would make, we're hoping to make us equal to the per capita amount that the large metropolitan cities received from the federal government. And then also for increased flexibility to utilize FEMA funding for this unique disaster. We'll also be looking to support infrastructure and transportation by supporting increased transportation funding and dedicated funding for small and mid-sized MPOs, as well as preserving their decision-making availability in the prioritization, planning and designation of funding for regional transportation projects. And as always, we're still advocating for a quick and full resolution to the I thirty-five construction through Waco with a minimal impact to our community. We'll be playing defense for local government, particularly against preemption and in support of maintaining local control on local issues, as well as opposing any unfunded mandates or cost shifting. And we will also be looking to support the county in their request for an establishment of a county court of law and a district court here in McLennan County. And then for economic development and workforce efforts, we're looking to support economic development programs, including the preservation of Chapter Three thirteen agreements. And we'll also be working to support measures that enhance workforce development and education programs, including with funding for STEM or STEAM programs with pre-K through twelve and post-secondary certifications. And that is all I have for you today. I would be happy to take any of your questions. But fair warning, I will let Carol answer any of your hard ones in our session update.
Ashley, thank you so much for that presentation. I realize you're subbing in in some regard. I I wanted to ask, I mean, if so, we're engaging our lobbyists to lobby for our right to lobby, to hire lobbyists and lobby for us. If if that bill were to pass, then would we still be able to send a city staff delegation to to work the legislature? Or would that be a ban on all local entities lobbying?
As it's currently written, it is a confusing, confusing problem. Because if you're sending a city staffer to do that same thing, would they then be required to register as a lobbyist? So it's hard to say there are conversations and we were we were grateful for Senator Birdwell in the fall. He is open to some compromise on kind of tackling some of the concerns that they have while still letting cities have the ability to access the legislature in this way. So I think for that one, it's yet to be seen. But there could be some unintended consequences like that where we might be impacted in that way.
And to that point, I'd like to say too, I Bradley and I were able to get on a call with Senator Birdwell about a month back, maybe before this was presented at the hearing. And I want to thank our city staff for, and Ashley, I think you were on that call as well. And our city staff are assisting and helping or assisting in presenting why this really isn't an efficient way for us to ensure that we're monitoring what's happening in the legislative session. I mean, that this is actually provides cost savings to his constituency throughout his district. And I'm very thankful for his receptiveness to this and also in the hearing the subsequent day, really asking some some really great questions, challenging how this would play out and impact cities in this district. So I do want to thank him for advocating well for us and advocating well for the cities in this district. And I'm optimistic that he'll that 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 there can be a result that is positive for us here.
Hey, Ashley, thank you so much for for the conversation. I know that we all knew that the legislative session was going to be tough from the very beginning, especially while we're in the middle of a pandemic. And so I really want to thank you for all of your work that has gone into this. For my interpretation, make sure that I'm I'm understanding this correctly. And I apologize that sometimes I could be a little slow. But could you tell me what all Medicaid availability encompasses?
So I am not the resident expert here on that. I will definitely get you some more information there. Can bring a better explanation back at at a future.
That's just the new term that I'm not used to hearing. So I'm curious as to see what all it entails. But but I do appreciate, you know, the priorities that that are coming before us. Obviously, we know that with this year, redistricting is a major one. And I, you know, we were, Councilmember Bearfoot and I were on a census call last weekend and we understand the delays in getting the numbers to our city and our county. And so we know that that process will look a little, well, a lot different than what it did in twenty-ten or twenty or two thousand. One of the things that I'm very glad is that we are advocating for better broadband access across our city and to make sure that our our city, to me, that's another equity issue. I think this issue really surfaced to the top when our local ISDs went to virtual learning and many of our students did not have access to internet or to Wi-Fi or to broadband. And so I look forward to seeing recommendations from the city, how we can address those issues. Because to me, that's just the quality now in today's day, it's a quality of life standard as well. And so thank you for including that. And so I'm also glad to hear the list of seven to eight items that the city is advocating for, which I know in one way or another fall in line with council's priorities. And so thank you again for the work that has gone gone forth on on your behalf. And and we just hope that as the session begins and and throughout it, we hope for the best. So so thank you for all of your work.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Ashley, the policy nerd in me is so excited hearing all of these updates and thanks for giving us the big broad brush picture of what's going on. The social worker in me is excited by whatever you want to call it, Medicaid availability, Medicaid expansion. I've talked to just Family Health Center and just the difference that this would make in Texas. Expanding Medicaid eligibility would just be such a game changer for our community. So want to wave my little flag there and saying that this would be great. I'd love to know, just out of curiosity, what similar sized cities are paying for kind of budget-wise for their lobbyists? I think for residents in a community like ours where our median income is under forty thousand dollars a year, people might see that a hundred plus thousand dollar salary and raise their eyebrows. But obviously, we need top-notch folks in that role. So I would just be curious to know what some of our sister cities are paying for lobbyists.
Sure. We'll be glad to do a peer city review there.
Ashley, thank you for pinch hitting, but I know in all the times that I've been down to the legislature, I see you just as much as anybody else there. So I know good and well that you are very, very knowledgeable in this and we appreciate all the work that you offer. Because of the pandemic and how we are changing the way Because of the pandemic and how we are changing the way we have hearings and things, what is, what, what are you hearing as recommendation for organizations or constituents to be able to offer their testimony or comment for as, as they come about and, and testimony is, is given?
Yeah, that's a really good question and I don't have a great answer. And it's going to be hard because some of those meetings can be changed at such a last minute.
Yeah.
A lot of it's going to be just getting with your legislators ahead of time and letting your positions be known. But again, with, with people not being able to be there in person, that access is just so limited. And not to say that they're turning people away, they are, people are allowed to come in person, but it's, it's, you know, the.
Correct.
Size gatherings and all that is much more limited.
So you would recommend, I, I mean, and I, this is just what I'm thinking. So if, if we do have organizations who, you know, have testimony that they want to submit or opinions that they want their representatives to be aware of, this is opportunity for them to reach out to the local offices here because people are still manning the phones and they are still answering emails. And it is especially the issues that we launched collectively that are important and imperative to Waco and Wacoans that, you know, I just want to make sure that everyone knows that you still have the opportunity to make your voice heard.
Yeah. Submitting written testimony by email is a great method or calling on the phone as well.
Thank you.
Ashley, this is Holmes. Great presentation. I like the highlights. Appreciate you presenting today. As for unfunded mandates, I know that it's hard to get specific on them, but in, in a lot of these we've seen hit the county pretty hard on cost shifting. It kind of hit the city indirectly in a lot of ways, but are there, is there anything percolating out there, particularly in the context of covering that $1 billion deficit that potentially could come back to our local taxpayers to have to consider? And maybe this is a question, a deeper question, but really percolating unfunded mandate dialogue, are you hearing anything there?
I'm not hearing anything as far as specific bills. One thing that the legislature does do is, is when there are bills that could have a local impact, they reach out through the Legislative Budget Board and we provide some fiscal impact analysis. So that is something that we keep an eye on. I think that would be a good question probably for Carol in the mid-session update. Just as, as we see bills start to make it through the process, are there any that have potential to be that type of impact?
Great. Thank you, Ashley.
Just wanted to, I apologize for not mentioning this in my comments earlier, but I, I really appreciate the city putting in the request for the county court at law and the district court as, as a lawyer who's, who's practiced in our course in the McLennan County courthouse. Sometimes it's difficult to get a setting. We've got sometimes backlogs of criminal and civil cases, in addition with a number of specialty courts that have just come online. So I, I think this is much needed for a county of a quarter million people that serves primarily city of, of Waco residents. So thank you all for pushing that. I really appreciate it.
All right, Ashley, thank you for pinch hitting for Carol today and council will follow up with some responses as, as necessary. And Mayor, it's your meeting.
Great. Are there any requests for future agenda items? If not, we will now recess the work session and reconvene regular session for executive session as read into the record by the city secretary at 4:34 PM.
Yes, Mayor and Council, notice is hereby given that the city council will go into executive session in accordance with the following provisions. One, Attorney Briefing, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.071, CTWP versus City of Waco and Texas Document Solutions, Inc., Cause Number 2017-3559-4, pending in the 170th Judicial District Court. Cause Number 10-18-00073-CB, pending in the Court of Appeals for the 10th District of Texas. And two, Real Property, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.072. And three, Economic Development, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.087. We are now in executive session at 4:35 PM and you should have received a link to the executive session meeting.